Good evening. Thank y'all for coming out tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. I know the weather's terrible. We appreciate you being here. I want to call the June 17, 2025 regular meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to order. The thought for the day, look for something positive in every day, even if some days you have to look a little harder. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Edwards if he would do our invocation, followed by Commissioner Long, to lead us in the pledge.
Everyone would bow their heads, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you once again with the tasks of the county at hand. We ask your blessing upon those. We ask that you bless each family represented here. We ask that you take each one of us home safely. But most of all, Lord, we ask for your wisdom and your discernment in everything we do here tonight. We pray these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number four. But before we adopt the agenda, we are asking that we make a small amendment to the current agenda to add letter nine H, as in Henry, to our consent agenda, which will be the adoption of the annual holiday calendar for fiscal year 26. This process and adoption is always done at the beginning of each fiscal year, and it's located in your folder on the back page and will be posted on our county website for visibility. So prior to adopting the agenda, the consent agenda, we're just asking that we add letter nine H so that the next year's holiday calendar will be included.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number four. But before we adopt the agenda, we are asking that we make a small amendment to the current agenda to add letter nine H, as in Henry, to our consent agenda, which will be the adoption of the annual holiday calendar for fiscal year 26. This process and adoption is always done at the beginning of each fiscal year, and it's located in your folder on the back page and will be posted on our county website for visibility. So prior to adopting the agenda, the consent agenda, we're just asking that we add letter nine H so that the next year's holiday calendar will be included.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda, it's citizen comments. At this time, number five is for agenda topics only. Again, this is for citizen comments, but it's for items listed on the agenda only. Each person will be given three minutes to address the Board of Commissioners with any topics that are on the agenda. Once the time has ended, the next person will have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Barbara Morgan, 2158 East Street, Covington, Georgia. Hello? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, all right. On the consent agenda, we-
Maybe it's not better.
Sorry. Thank you. All right. Good evening. On the consent agenda, you have the appointments to the JDA that involves DeKalb, Newton, and Gwinnett County. As many years as I have been coming to these meetings, it has never been made clear to me what was the purpose of this body when it was created. Has it done what it was meant to do? Has it fulfilled its point? And why do we continue it? I don't, no one has ever, to my way of understanding, fully explained the point of this entity. Thank you.
Thank you. See anyone else? Okay, that will conclude the citizens' comments then. Thank you.
At this time, Madam Chair, we have the chairman's report, but I do not believe you have anything for this evening.
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item we have is item number seven, which is going to be reports from our interim county manager, Mr. James Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I do not have anything to report.
The next item we have listed is going to be item number eight, which is listed under unfinished business, and I do not see anything listed, nor have I received anything. So we're going to move into new business, which is item number 10. This is going to be presented by Mr. James Brown and Brittany White, our finance director, Newton County manager and finance department.
What we have-
My apologies when we made the amendment. Thank you so much. We're going to back up to item number nine, and we are going to move to take a motion for the consent agenda approval.
I'm sorry. That's, so at this time, could we have a motion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. That was unanimous. Thank you so much.
Terrific. Okay, so now we're going to move into item number 10 under new business, and we are going to ask again, Ms. Brittany White and Mr. James Brown, our Newton County manager and finance department, are seeking approval to adopt the fiscal year 26 budget resolution of 061725 and external appropriations resolution 061625A.
Good evening. Tonight, we will do just a quick summary of the budget overview. I know we have went over this numerous times, so we're just going to run through this really quickly. So just as a reminder, we do adopt a full budget for the entire county, not just the general fund. So this includes multiple special revenue funds, as well as capital funds, as well as our enterprise funds. So the total budget for the FY '26 proposed amount is $143.6 million. So just some general fund expenditure highlights. We do include a comp and class plan increase in this budget at $3.7 million. We did have a health insurance increase of 14%, which was $1.5 million. This has a contingency for new position line item at $1,750,000. Also, it has $1 million for public works bridge repairs, $750,000 for public works culvert replacements, $245,000 for a virtual server upgrade. It does have our ABM energy upgrade, Huntington Bank debt payment of $1,176,000. And then just a key highlight here that we have moved the Newton Beautiful Department from the general fund to the solid waste fund. For our general fund revenue highlights, this does have an estimated millage rate of 8.6. Again, this is just an estimated rate as we have not got the final tax digest yet. That would be an estimated increase of $94 on a $300,000 house. We did budget for an increase in loss collections for $400,000. That is the penny sales tax when you purchase items. We do also have a utilization of $4 million in fund balance, as well as a $400,000 increase in our premium taxes, insurance premium taxes. So this is just a quick synopsis of how our general fund expenditure breakdown is. You have your largest chunk of your budget, which is personnel services, at 66.1%. And let me find that slide because that is really small and I cannot read that. So our next largest amount is our purchasing and contracted services at 16.8%, supplies at 10.9%, other cost of 3.4%, other financing uses of 2.2% and debt services at 1.1%. And this is just a breakdown of our general fund by department. So our overall general fund at this point in time is $108,641,020, which is a 9% increase over last year. And this graph just shows our millage rate history. So right now, we're going to be at an 8.6 estimated amount over last, that is an increase of what last year's was, 8.24. So our next steps at this point, we're going to be seeking a approval of our two budget resolutions. And then once our budget resolutions are passed, we then move on to adopting the millage rate through the millage rate adoption process. So there are any questions before we go into the adoption of the resolutions?
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Brittany, this budget is as presented at one week ago tonight, and I forget the date. That's the same exact budget we-
There were just a couple minor tweaks. We made adjustment to a duplicated salary in the tax assessors department, and then we moved the county manager department back under the BOC. Those are the two tweaks that we made.
But the amount, but the amount-
The dollar amount, I think the dollar amount decreased by about $40,000.
So we have a decrease of $40,000 from last week ago tonight presented. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Brittany, for everything you've done. I know I personally have budget fatigue right now, and you've done a great job, and everybody on this board's done a great job organizing this budget and put their whole heart into it to try to get something that everybody could live with. It's not what I wanted. I wanted it to be the same village, but I think that you've got to work together with people. We've got to take care of our employees here at Newton County. So I think that, you know, everybody's done a great job of trying to do what it takes to make it work. So thank you for everything you've done.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay. Is there a motion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion for the, to approve, I guess through resolution, right, Patrick?
That's correct.
Through the resolution to approve the budget as presented tonight by finance director.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. And I guess it goes to Brittany. Are we going to have just another brief look at, a small look at the budget before we, I guess, formally approve it? Maybe it's Brittany and Patrick.
The resolution tonight will formally approve your budget.
Any other discussion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, you're second, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Did he, oh, okay, that's unanimous then. I didn't see your hand.
Oh, so you're abstaining.
Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't hear that.
I've just renamed it. Reason why it was just that, ABM, and I went home and I thought about it for a while last week, and I just didn't remember. And the way we had been talking about it, just like it was something that was coming always up in the budget, and the fact that we had borrowed money from the bank and I just remembered it, and I'd just like to refresh my memory. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Patrick, I want to ask the question because I see this quite often since I've been on this board where, you know, we have a commission that's abstaining from the budget. Is that permissible to abstain? And if it is, just make this board aware of that. I've seen that happen several times that I thought that whenever we get to this budget, you either vote yes or you vote no. And I thought when you abstain, it means that there's some type of conflict, not that you disagree with what's in the budget or what's an item on the agenda.
So the answer to your question is yes and no. So as a general rule, an abstention, someone abstains from voting has a specific meaning, as you noted. You abstain when there is a conflict of interest. However, Georgia law does not compel someone to cast a vote. So in this instance, although the word used was abstaining, what the Commissioner Henderson has actually done is just refuse to cast, or failed to cast a vote. There's nothing illegal or unlawful about that.
Okay, so basically the terminology doesn't need to be abstained. It needs to just say, "I refuse from voting."
Or I withhold my vote. I'm not sure the terminology matters that much. It has a same that effect.
Okay. And the reason why I oppose that and I ask that question is because when you look at the responsibility of this board, our main objective is to adopt a budget. That is our main job. Our second job is planning and zoning. And I think, you know, there's a lot of times where there are abstentions from votes because we feel like, oh, I don't want to get caught up or I don't want to be said that I voted for something. And I think I want to encourage this board to stop utilizing abstentions as a way to get out of doing what we were elected to do. Either you agree with it or you don't agree with it. Say yes, I'm going to approve it, or no, I'm not going to approve it. But I think sometimes we use abstention as a way to scapegoat from really doing what we are called to do. And I think we've got to get to a point as this board, we've got to stop doing that and stop using abstentions as a way to excuse ourselves from voting on very serious things that this board needs to vote on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Edwards, did you-
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patrick, if that's state law allows that, then we're, that, our charter is adverse to that law.
So what your charter does is only addresses the one circumstance in which the commissioner, well, there's two circumstances. Either he's absent or he abstains. But there's no, as a general rule, I can't compel someone to raise their hand, nor could a court. Right? So there's no way you could compel someone to vote. It is as if the commissioner left the room on that moment. So it's one of those things, and Commissioner Mason makes a very good point. Elected officials often use abstention to simply avoid a vote, and that's not what the purpose of abstention is for. I think both your charter and the law in general encourages votes on every matter, but there's no mechanism to compel a vote.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Well, I think, well, I believe I've been on this board long enough to know what I can and what I can't do. I think I've been on this board a little bit longer than Commissioner Mason, than Commissioner Edwards. And it's something that we had done, that had been done prior to you coming on to the board. It was all right. But just let me say this. If you want to change it, then the board will go back to the charter and change it. But don't try to scold me on the board, tell me what I should and shouldn't do.
Do what the charter says.
Hey, I abstain. That's what I've done. That's what I mean. I'm not going to change it. And I stand by that.
Okay.
I'm not against, I'm not-
Okay, you abstain and-
I'm not against the budget at all. But I'm entitled to my opinion as a commissioner, the same as you. I didn't, I didn't want, when y'all, two years and a half, three years, y'all claimed that I was stealing. I didn't agree with you, but I never complained. I was just smiling and came on this board. And Patrick, I think y'all got paid for it, and that was fine. And so now you're going to try to scold me for this? We need to look at the communities in two, three, and four and stop abstaining on doing something in those districts and doing something to help the people, especially kids and seniors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that, you got the vote down? Okay.
Just the first.
Okay, so-
We still need to do 10B.
Okay. So now we're ready for the second one?
Yes. So the second resolution is essentially just a resolution that we're adopting to approve the appropriations.
Okay. Any questions? Any discussion on that? Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that's the B part. That's resolution A, right?
That's right.
Okay. Somebody, do you have a second?
I don't yet.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson made the motion. Commissioner Edwards, second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. It's unanimous.
The next item we have, Ms. Brittany, is item number 11, which is the May 2025 financial report.
Thank you. So May is the 11th month of our fiscal year, so this is right around 92% of the way through our fiscal year at this point. So we'll start with our general fund revenues. To date, our revenues are coming in at 93.6 million, which puts us right at 88.26% of our budgeted revenue. So this graph just shows the revenue based on monthly amounts, and then the actuals to budget is the graph below. So for our general fund expenditures, to date, we are at 92.7 million, which puts us right at 87%. So May was an extremely high month in our expenditures, as you can see, and that was due to the public works transfer that we did a couple meetings ago. So the journal entries that were needed associated with that motion were booked in our books in May. So that's why the expenditures are so high in May. So at this point, our revenues are $882,000 over what our expenditures are for the year. So at this point in the year, you can see that we've started balancing out our revenues to expenditures. So if we have three enterprise funds, so the water fund, their revenue to date is 10.6 million. Their expenses to date is 7 million. For the solid waste fund, their revenue to date is 8.3 million. Their expenses to date are 6.5 million. For our Gaithers and Factory Shoals Fund, their revenue to date is 204,000, and their expenses to date are 273,000. We have currently three open active splosts. We have one remaining project in the 2011 splosts, which is the Stork Jail. We are getting mostly wrapped up with our 2017 splosts. There's just a couple outstanding projects there, and we have a remaining balance of $31.6 million there. So we're currently spending mostly our bonded projects here in the 2023 splosts. So our remaining current balance there is right around 7 million. So we have brought in collections to date, $41.7 million. So that does put us right about 8.7 million over what we originally projected the splosts to be at this point in time. And for our impact fees, the balance there is 2 million, and we've got several active projects going on in the impact fees, such as parks and recs, roads, and the libraries. And that wraps up the May financials. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Any question? Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Madam Chair, the next item we have is item number 12, being presented by Jason Johnson, our facilities director. Facilities Department is requesting approval of change order number four to the Five Field Lawn Care Professional Services Agreement for landscaping services to add 10 locations to the contract. It is budgeted.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So as Ms. Hamp said, we are requesting to add 10 locations to our landscape maintenance contract. Four of those locations are roundabouts, and as you may or may not know, when the state has completed those roundabouts, we assume the landscape maintenance for those roundabouts. The other six sites are cell tower sites that came online during the summer of last year. And so 911 is asking that we add those to our contract as well. The total annual addition to this contract is $31,160,000. So, we're currently spending mostly our bonded projects here in the 2023 splosts, so our remaining current balance there is right around 7 million. So, we have brought in collections to date, $41.7 million, so that does put us right about 8.7 million over what we originally projected the splosts to be at this point in time. And for our impact fees, the balance there is 2 million, and we've got several active projects going on in the impact fees, such as parks and wrecks, roads, and the libraries. And that wraps up the May financials. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Any question? Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Madam Chair, the next item we have is item number 12, being presented by Jason Johnson, our Facilities Director. Facilities Department is requesting approval of change order number four to the Five Field Lawn Care Professional Services Agreement for landscaping services to add 10 locations to the contract. It is budgeted.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, as Ms. Hamp said, we are requesting to add 10 locations to our landscape maintenance contract. Four of those locations are roundabouts, and as you may or may not know, when the state has completed those roundabouts, we assume the landscape maintenance for those roundabouts. The other six sites are cell tower sites that came online during the summer of last year, and so 911 is asking that we add those to our contract as well. The total annual addition to this contract is $31,166.16. It is a budgeted item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Long?
So, help me with this. So, we're asking to add sites to it, and so why would we just do this in the new budget on July 1? Why are we doing it now?
It is included in, it starts July 1.
So, you're just asking us that you're doing a changeover on your budget to add these, but it is in the budget for July 1, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I guess I'm not understanding why we're coming before us with this in June if it's already a budgeted item for July 1.
Commissioner, the request isn't to, it's not a change order for the budget, it's a change order for the contract with the vendor.
Okay.
So, we're amending the contract with the vendor to require him to service those additional 10 sites. And that additional $31,000 is in your budget already.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I was like, why are we doing this? And we just got there with all this budget stuff. All right, that's what I wanted to find out, is what we were doing here. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to call you real one, and I'm going to call you real. I appreciate what you have done, what you continue to do for our county. And I mostly want to appreciate you for, no matter what question is asked by me, or I think about any board member, you always answer to the best of your ability and tell us, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And having said that, if there's no more questions, it's okay, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Any other questions? Commissioner Henderson made the motion. Commissioner Edwards? Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number 13. We have Ms. Frida Reed, our Director of Senior Services, doing the presenting. Senior Services is requesting approval to accept funding for installation of a pickleball court at the Senior Enrichment Center located at 40 Richard Chapel Road. The cost is $32,473, and there is no cost to the county.
Hello.
Good evening.
I stand before you, just requesting approval to accept the donation from Newton County Senior Services, Inc., which is part of our nonprofit. This money was raised by them, but it was also raised by the seniors of the senior center. They asked for a pickleball court. It wasn't budgeted in the splosh, so we came up with the money, and I would like to say, not only did we come up with the 32, they came up with 40. So, the 40 will help us put some more things at the new enrichment center that's needed, that we can't pay for, because when splosh was awarded, it only awarded brick and mortar. It didn't award all the other things that I think our seniors should be able to enjoy, the amenities. And I'm saying that because I'm a senior myself. So, I just think this is something that they requested, they worked for it, and I just want the approval from the board, so, because it is going on county land. And so, once it goes there, it's the county's.
Okay. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Discussion, you have, okay. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Ms. Freedom, I am too a senior myself, and I've been planning on trying to learn how to get pickleball going in my life. Okay, you heard it, didn't you? I mean, Commissioner Long, she's going to teach me, and I'm looking forward to that as well. And I want to thank you and the seniors, y'all, for looking out for us seniors. And I would thank you, always reminding me, say, "J.C., say, you a senior, or you think you are not?" And I'm thankful. And keep up the good work.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Freedom, for the work that you do for our seniors. We are very, very excited about the Senior Enrichment Center. I think pickleball courts have been something that has been requested for quite some time now, and so I think this is a great opportunity to be able to implement these pickleball courts so that they can be utilized by our seniors. I hear a lot of them play pickleball, and this is some, you know, an activity that is good for them to continue their activities as a senior outdoors, outside, their movement. So, I think this is amazing that the, you all came up, the seniors came up with this, as well as the Newton County Senior Services, Inc., nonprofit, did this. So, I think this is going to be amazing, amazing asset to the location. I get an opportunity. Everywhere I go, I have to pass the upcoming new senior services enrichment center, and so I'm seeing it develop. I'm seeing it, now the walls, they're getting ready to start putting up, they put the roof on, I've seen the awning in the back, I mean, it's just, seeing it from ground up has been amazing to be able to watch it every single day. So, thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for bringing this to us and for doing this work.
Thank you, but I want to say this before I sit down. It's not only me, it's my wonderful staff. You know, without that wonderful staff and support, we couldn't do this. And it's our seniors who feel that they're part of this county, and I want to thank you for letting them feel that way, that they can contribute to the county. I just want to thank all the commissioners.
So, thank you, thank our staff, and thank our seniors as well.
Commissioner Edwards, did you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Thank you and your staff for being ambassadors for the seniors. I may be one, I don't know what the age limit is, but I might be one of those seniors, I don't know yet. But this is, this is a partnership. What you guys did means this is a big, a true partnership, and you're not only, you're not a taker, you're a giver. And we appreciate that, especially ironically, right here at budget time. So, thank you so much for doing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, wait, one second. Commissioner Cooper?
Ms. Freedom, I also want to thank you for everything that you do. And I've been over there quite a few times and see that work you do, and I do know that you have a lot of, you know, volunteers that helping, assisting you along the way. But I just want to say thank you for everything that you do for our seniors.
Okay. Do I have a motion? All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, we're at item number 14. This is going to be presented by James Brown, our county manager, and Mr. Jeff Prine, our project manager for the South Side Community Park, Factory Shoals Park, is requesting approval of construction management at Risk Services, contract with Sunbelt Builders, and the funding source is Splosh 23, and budgeted, yes.
Good evening. Several weeks ago, we put out an RFP for a construction manager at Risk to join our design team as we move this project forward. We had one proposal that was received from Sunbelt. We evaluated it, made sure that everything was in order. We've gone through the exercise of getting them under contract, and we're bringing them to you tonight. This is step one, for them to enter into the pre-construction phase. We will be coming back to you with our guaranteed maximum price for construction once we've gotten to that point. So, we're asking you to award the contract and authorize it to be executed in the amount of $3,000.
Anyone have any questions? Do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're at item number 15, and we are going to hear from Amanda Huggins. We're going to have a presentation by the City of Covington Gas Department.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name, excuse me, is Amanda Huggins, and I'm the Regulatory Compliance Specialist for Covington Natural Gas. I came back in the fall, but I know we, since we have so many new faces, I wanted to come back and represent our presentation. The reason that we do this is because we have federal and state guidelines that we have to follow for our public awareness program. So, we, elected officials are part of that program. So, you have some handouts there. I've got the PowerPoint for you. There is a Georgia 811 informational card, and there's also an informational sheet there. It's kind of a sample of what we mail out to a lot of our customers and people that are affected by our gas pipelines. The most important thing I've given you is a survey. The most important thing is a survey that you guys have. If you could please fill that survey out for us, that's very important. It's kind of how we document what we're doing, to show our inspectors when they come to evaluate our program for us. If you wanted to, after you filled them out, if you want to hand them to Ms. Jackie or Ms. Susan in the clerk's office by Monday and next week or so, and then I'll go and collect them, that would be awesome, so. And if you have any questions, I'll leave that open at the end there. So, let's see. So, just a quick overview, we will go over like some quick natural gas basics, how we get our supply through our pipelines, and the different sizes of the pipelines, and what they look like. And then, we'll go over the gas operations in our area, and how to identify pipelines to prevent damage. Then, at the end, we'll go over some natural gas safety. Okay. So, the purpose of this presentation, again, is to communicate relevant information to emergency responders and public officials regarding our natural gas and natural gas safety in the cities of Covington and Oxford, and then also different portions of Newton and Walton Counties. Also, we, here's, these are the guidelines here, the state and federal regulation, regulations that we're following by presenting this to you. So, real briefly, how's natural gas formed? So, hundreds of millions of years ago, tiny sea plants and animals died and were buried in the ocean floor, and over time, they were covered by layers of silt and sand, and the remains were buried over more, over more hundreds of millions, millions of years, deeper and deeper. So, basically, all that heat and pressure pushed everything down, and then we, so now we can go in and we can dig through the sand, silt, and rock that contains the oil and gas, and get it that way. This is just a quick little chart here of natural gas applications that was done in 2020. The percentage did not make it up here for the electric power, but it's actually 39%. The majority of natural gas is used for electric power. And then, of course, the second highest usage is for industrial. So, natural gas has lots of benefits. It's the cleanest burning fuel of all fossil fuels. 60% of Americans agree that it's environmentally friendly. The majority of natural gas used in the United States comes from the United States. It's energy efficient and an independent source of energy with extended future reserves that we have. The purpose of pipelines is to provide a means of moving the energy resources of our nation from production areas to the end user or the customers, and the pipelines are designed, installed, and maintained to ensure safe and reliable operations. Our main gas operator is Williams Transco Pipeline. It's commonly called the City Gate. They measure the flow of gas from the transmission pipeline operator to the local utility. The local utility usually reduces operating pressure and may add odorant, which we'll talk about in a second. Then, we will transport the natural gas via distribution pipes or mains, which will go to the service lines to the customers. So, this is a picture of, excuse me, the Williams Transco Pipeline. It starts down here in the Gulf of Mexico, almost to the tip of Texas, and then works all the way up to the northeast there. There's different kinds of materials that the pipelines are made out of. The older material, like PVC, cast iron, and copper, you'll still see very few of, there's still a little bit out there, but mainly is steel or plastic, or also called polyethylene. And the steel is more resistant to third-party damages and may be operated at higher pressures. And it also has the protective coatings applied. The PE is more commonly used in our distribution systems. So, anytime we're putting a new pipeline out, we don't use steel anymore for our service lines, we use the plastic. And these are pictures, usually the yellow there is what you'll see, of different pipe materials. The pipeline sizes, there's typically two inches in diameter and located roughly about two feet below the surface. Those are our mains. These lines aren't buried very deeply, so, which is why we have to get this information out to make you aware that they're just below the surface. But branching off of that are our service lines, and they're typically a half an inch, three quarters of an inch in diameter. So, at the City of Covington, we provide natural gas to areas of Walton and Newton County. This is our, I know it's really hard to see, but this is our GIS map of our, the regions we cover. We go as far south as the Stewart Community Area, as far north is right below Walnut Grove, as far east is New Bern, and as far west is right outside of Port Adele. So, most of the natural gas lines are underground, minus our regulator stations, and there's a lot of different kinds of lines underground, like, you know, water and electric and phone. So, the best way to identify our gas pipelines is to look around. And what you're looking for are these markers. This has the product being carried in the pipeline along with our company's name and our 24-hour contact information. These aren't directly over the pipelines, it's just giving you awareness that there's gas pipes around that sign. You can also, you'll see pipeline right-ofaways, and again, the regulator stations. 811 is a national N-11 number for homeowners and professionals to call before you dig. They go directly to our local one-call centers, and the affected utilities will then mark your underground lines for free. There's no charge. And this campaign with 811 has helped to increase awareness among the public about the importance of the gas lines being marked before you dig. Anything from like, things you wouldn't think about, like planting a garden, installing a mailbox post, anytime you're going to go in the ground, you just want to give them a call. You want to call them two to three working days before you do any kind of mechanized digging. In Georgia, it's the law. So, if you do hit a line, there's no 811 ticket, you can get fined. Also, there's some different markings you may see that are not permanent. So, 811 has different flags for different utilities. The color flag for gas is yellow. 811 also has this call before you dig campaign, and we use newspaper... 811 also has this call before you dig campaign, and we use newspaper ads, group meetings like tonight, and radio ads, and mailers to get the information out. So, these are just some different videos of some really bad gas explosions that happened. So, methane is the main ingredient in natural gas, it's 94% to 96% of the makeup of natural And it's, natural gas is non-toxic, but if it's displaced in the oxygen in a room, asphyxiation may occur. And in its natural state, it's colorless, odorless, tasteless, compressible, inflammable. And then that odor we were talking about is called my Captain that Williams Transco puts in it for us before we get it, and it's got that rotten, a rotten egg smell. And almost, most of our gas customers are quite aware of that smell, which is awesome because they'll, they know to call us immediately. So, the characteristics and properties of natural gas regarding explosive limits, if you do get a leak, a gas leak, you, there's a certain explosive limit of natural gas that has to occur before ignition can happen. So, approximately 5% of gas in air is called LEL, and above 15% of gas in air is your upper explosive limit or UEL. So, anything in between that 5% to 15%, gas to air ratio can cause an explosion. And that's constantly shifting during a gas leak because the gas is rising. This just goes over the specific gravity of the different, of natural gas. And this is a really good chart showing that, the limits of flammability between, so anything in between that 5% to 15%, you can have an ignition. So, the best ways to determine leaks from natural pipelines is to use your senses of sight, smell, and hearing. Again, the signs of natural gas leak, you have that my Captain rotten egg smell, you can see bubbles in wet or flooded areas, you obviously, you'll see flames, you can hear hissing or blowing sounds from pipelines, storage tanks, or an appliance. There's dead or discolored vegetation where it's normally green, and you can see dirt or dust blowing up from the ground. So, the proper steps to take if you do suspect any kind of gas leak is to evacuate the premises immediately. And you don't want to do anything to ignite a flame because of that constant change of the gas to air. So, nothing till, any kind of spark, you don't want to turn on a light switch, plug, unplug, or plug anything in. You don't want to get anything, don't cut anything that's motorized like a lawnmower or vehicle on or off. And another thing people don't think about is your cell phone. So, you want to call after you evacuate the site of the gas leak. You'll either call 911, or we really encourage you to call your local utility company, which would be us, to report the leak because we'll have somebody pick up 24/7. This is an example of our, one of our mailers we send out to our gas customers. It's really handy. We try to get you guys and encourage your constituents to keep this when they get it. This is our one from September. We'll also send another one out in March. It's got really helpful information if they are gas customers. It's got the number to call, and then all the different, recognizing the leaks and things like that. This is contact information. We have our gas director, Mr. Rob Jewell, and our gas systems operations manager, I'm sorry, yeah, gas system operations manager, Rob Lee, and then my contact information is there as well. And that concludes the presentation. Again, if you guys ever have any questions or concerns or need any further information, just give us a call about what's going on. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, we're at item number 16. This is our citizen comments. This gives everyone an opportunity, our citizens, to come forward and address the board regarding their questions or concerns. Each person will be given three minutes, and after the three minutes, your time will conclude, and the next person will be able to come forward and speak. And again, this is citizen comments, general comments for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Williams. I live at 93 Upper River Road. I've been going, having problems with my ditch in front of my yard. I have tried to go through all the proper channels since 2021. I talked to Marcela Baines, he had sent someone out to look at it. They scraped it, they left it a mess, they left water in the ditch, and up under my drain is, up under my driveway, the pipe is deteriorating. Now, I have talked to Mr. Henderson, he came out and looked at it. I gave him some pictures, I think I emailed you guys, Ms. Hayes. I have talked to Andre, I have talked to James Brown, I have talked to Chester, I have tried to go through all the proper channels. Again, it's dissolved. I still have a mess in front of my yard where water is still standing there. The pipe up underneath my driveway is deteriorating because on the other side of the driveway, they got, they come out, they pack mud. All the mud is sitting up under, in the pipe. The pipe has deteriorated, the pipe is starting to bit. I got a crack going all the way across my driveway. So, I don't know what else to do. I lost my husband five years ago. I have heart problems. This right here keep me so upset because when nobody else want their yard like this. And like I said, they just came out not long ago, scraped it. They asked me, what, what you want us to do? I just want you to do your job and fix this pipe because the pipe is deteriorating, I got a crack now. Mud sit in the drain, mud sit completely, it's no pipe there no more. So, who's going to help me? I'm trying to do my best. I don't know what else to do.
Madam Chair, some, someone can speak with her after.
Yes. Can we get with you after the meeting and, and talk about this?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for your, we're real sorry about that.
My name is Thelma Sternal. I live at 3163 Stone Mountain Street, Covington. At the last meeting, at the end, I heard some comments about all the things that were going to be done, the things that they were going to be doing at Denny Dog Park for this month. And it just reminded me that all the other parks are doing stuff, but three years ago, they shut down the park in Nelson Hike. So, that mean that our kids were put on the street. So, you know, I feel like when you brag about your park and a place, what you can do stuff, but you've shut down another park, you know, and that's kind of fair to our kids because like I said, they're on the street. So, and I think Commissioner Henderson, for all the parks that have been put here in this county for the kids, it gives you somewhere to go during the summer, something to play on and everything. And then when you come up here before this board and you ask for money, and then people be saying, well, we have to, we just can't give away money, we have to give account to the taxpayers. So, I feel like everybody sitting in this room is a taxpayer and a voter. And I know that y'all have to answer to us. So, if we're the taxpayers, then when we come up here and sometimes, you know, certain people come up here and ask for stuff, they get it, certain people don't. So, I just feel like, you know, when you're talking about a park or whatever you're talking about, remember the people, that, all the little kids that you have put in the coal. So, just be mindful sometimes of the things that you say and that you do to each other. You know, we can respect y'all, but y'all don't respect each other. So, Commissioner Henderson, I give you your flowers today and saying thank you for all the hard work that you do for the senior citizens and the kids. I'm going to give them to you while you're living because when you're dead, you can't hear nothing at all. So, y'all just think about what I said. You know, our kids are still sitting outdoors in the coal, sitting out there, when they do the lunches for the kids during the summer, they sitting out there up under the provision. I know they supposed to put, they put a little tent out there, but you can't fight off the mosquitoes and the flies that are biting the kids. So, it could be y'all kids that's out there. So, just think about the kids and think about the senior citizens sometime because everybody in here are taxpayers. Thank you, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is James Franklin. My address is 2345 Gum Creek Road, and I am a firefighter with Newton County Fire Department. I've been with the department for 22 years, and I just wanted to impart on y'all some lessons that my father, you know, shared with me, some things I'm sure that your family shared with you, and that is that actions have consequences, something we've all learned. Sometimes we think the younger generation may not learn that, but not only is that important, but inaction also has consequences. That's what brings me before you tonight. So, over the years, the 22 years I've been with the fire department, a lot of ups and downs. And as I come for, before you tonight, we, as a department, are in crisis. We are here, I am here, to plead, to beg for your help, to do something. We are losing people every day. We have fire trucks that we cannot man, that are just sitting idle. We have other fire trucks that have two people on them. Two people is not safe for Newton County citizens, two people is not safe for us as firefighters. So, again, I come before you, I beg you to do something as a board. We need these firefighters. I'm no longer on the fire truck. I am the fire safety educator, so I deal a lot with the public, but I pray for these men and women every evening, as well as praying for these citizens. And I just don't want to see us go down a road where inaction leads to some bad consequences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Ahad. I'm a 15-year resident of Newton County. I'm also the board secretary for Silver Ridge Farms. I'm here because during the last BOC meeting, District Fire Commissioner Leon Long stated that, quote, "She is sick and tired of hearing about this $4 million grant, the county does not have the grant, or it was illegally applied for," end quote. I am here to debunk that context. If the grant was illegally applied for, I would not have in my possession, Madam Chair, the grant award letter from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development dated March 2nd, 2023, to Commissioner Elena Sanders, from Robert J. Kagan, Deputy Assistant Secretary of Economic Development, Grant T., Newton County, Project Westside Youth Facility, amount $4 million. Grant number B23CPGA00464. This award letter outlines grant award requirements and info needed from you, the county, to prepare the grant agreement for execution. What we do not have is an executed contract agreement. No contract agreement equal no actual funds for reimbursement expenses associated with this project. This is due to Newton County in action to submit the requested documents such as line item budget, project narrative, environmental review. Those items were not required during the grant application process. As a seasoned professional in federal grants administration, from pre-award to closeout and the annual single audit in between, I helped Commissioner Sanders apply for this grant. Now, your consultant has brought this to your attention on numerous equations, I did so too. My question is, will you submit the requested documents, yes or no? If yes, when? Our tax dollars paid a considerable amount to a consultant for the designation of this facility. Many residents met at the Westside Precinct to for input on a desired location. If not, why not? Would it be because then Commissioner Elena Sanders applied for and got the grant? The current administration is cutting programs, rescinding federal awards, and my organization is experiencing some pushback as well. Therefore, I would not be surprised if we lose this grant due to the BOC's much-delayed response to get an executed contract agreement. Should we expect our property tax to increase to fund this project should we lose this grant? Fiscal year 2026 starts October 1st.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time is, uh...
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want you guys to have progress in District 3 because we are tired of waiting.
Thank you.
Elena Sanders, and I heard comments saying it was a problem. I just want to make you aware that Congressman Johnson's office, soon as they saw my name on that grant, they went and changed it to Newton County. So, there is no problem on the grant. It is referred to Newton County, Georgia, and Congressman Johnson's office took care of that ASAP. Also, just to reiterate, I want to remind you all, the conversation that was had about the budget and the vote really disturbed me because last year in 2024, and I know Commissioner Henderson, you had a family of mercy, thank God, your, your family is doing well, there were only three commissioners voting on that budget last year. Myself, Commissioner Edwards, and Commissioner Cowan. We were the only three here, and publicly it was stated, not coming from me, Commissioner Mason was at the Kamala Harris rally. And so, it was only three of us that voted on that budget. It was a two to one vote. And the reason why I didn't vote for it, because we had a $60 million surplus, and I didn't want to vote for something where we had enough money to be able to offset the taxpayers. Also, I want to reiterate SB 423, which is called the Enabling Legislation, and our charter. There is nothing, thank you Attorney Jack Sutter, in the charter, which is a Senate bill, so it is not state law, that includes abstention clause, no language about when a commissioner may abstain, it's present in the final legislation act. It was discussed in 2016 where the commissioners actually wanted to put it in there, you can pull it up and cover it to news, but it's not state law, so a commissioner can abstain. I want to go into open records. I recently did an open records with the county. I was quoted for a recent open records that's less than three years old, $2,500 for an open records. And I said, I want you to tell me how you got to that $2,500. Because based on Georgia law, you're supposed to quote it based on the lowest, the lowest rate. And so, I still have not got a response, and we also are outsourcing it to our law firm, which is billable hours. So, I want to know how many constituents in Newton County are being deterred to get open records and getting a bill for $2,500 for records that are technology savvy, you can pull through email through a search. I want to know that. My last question is, can someone tell me what is the issue and the family feud between the Monk family and other individuals in regards to the property on Fairview Road? There was information stated that she was a commissioner, that was false based on our county attorney, she was a commissioner, but we could still purchase the property, and there was information saying that I knew her, which was also false. So, what is the issue when the citizens of Newton County voted for that property? We could have moved forward in 2022, and that building would have been built. Can someone in Newton County tell me what is this family feud between the Monk, the Dobbs, and who are all these other people? Because that's what I was told while there's been hold on that property. Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Dave Norton of New Bern. I was hoping we'd have a U D O, uh, update tonight, but I did not see one. Hopefully we'll have one in two weeks. Also, I've been coming to these meetings for a couple of years now and speaking on, uh, developments that are coming to Newton County. One common denominator I've heard from every representative that sat over here and come up to the podium to speak is that we are in talks with the water authorities, uh, whether it be high-density housing, data centers, they all say the same thing, pretty much word for word, but yet we have not heard anything from our water department, our one water team where we had a meeting last year, we've not heard anything since then, uh, on a plan. And when you don't speak up and give a plan, then that's how rumors get started, and a lot of times rumors are not true. So it's better to, uh, it's better to have a plan, but it's also good to let the people know that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any, um, comments tonight? Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, uh, tell James, Brittany, and all the department heads, please, and I see some of them here tonight, make sure they understand, uh, our appreciation for the, um, the, the work they did on the budget. It was not a, I don't meet with you and Brittany and, and even Madam Chair, because I do like and, I do enjoy your, your company, but I don't meet, we don't meet that way for fun, you know what I mean? So, uh, a lot of it was painful, it is every year. Um, a lot of people had to make cuts, didn't want to make cuts, we felt was in the best interest of the county, but please convey my thanks to all those department heads, uh, if you would tomorrow, please. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just wanted to send out a quick reminder for the Juneteenth Movie in the Park event that we're gonna have at Denny Dawes Park on this Friday, uh, starting at six o'clock. We just want to invite the community out. Um, this is my fourth year, uh, actually holding the Movie in the Park series every May, June, and July, and so we always have an amazing time, uh, we always have great turnout, um, we have individuals coming not only from Newton County, uh, but also from Henry County, from DeKalb County, from Rockdale County, uh, even from our municipalities here throughout Newton County, and so I just want to invite everybody out, uh, to see, uh, the amazing movie that we're gonna have on this Friday, and just really have an opportunity to be able to meet your neighbors, uh, and to have an opportunity for those that I haven't had an opportunity to meet, uh, to get an opportunity to meet with me, have conversations with me. Uh, this is, uh, one of the three opportunities every single year, uh, or several opportunities, but one of the three in District Two, that you get an opportunity to kind of see me, have conversations with me. I want to make sure that I'm out, uh, having conversations with our community, getting to know them, they getting to know me, uh, and so this is one of those opportunities, so I want to invite everybody out. Um, I also lastly want to address the former District Three Commissioner that came up. Um, I think sometimes, uh, and what I have found, that there is generally misinformation, uh, that's always put out, or misconstrue, or don't understand, I don't know which one it is. Um, so the budget hearing that I was at, uh, that I missed last year, it was not an actual vote taken, it was a citizen budget hearing. Now, uh, because I know that the former District Three Commissioner loves to go look at videos, go take a look at the video, pull the video to ensure that it was a budget hearing. Uh, I've been on this board going on six years, seven years, this is gonna be my seventh budget, uh, I've never missed an actual budget vote, never, and so every vote, I've been able to participate in and take place. So I just wanted to put that on the record, make that correction, that there is a difference between a budget hearing and a budget vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cook? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just have a, uh, I guess a brief comment, is that, uh, we need to take a good look at the, uh, safeties of, of our parks here in Newton County, and I was reminded, uh, by the city of Covington, uh, and my son Anthony Henderson, who was just talking about putting signs up saying no guns allowed in, in parks, because we know recently over at Legion, uh, Legion Field, that there was a shooting, you know, out in public. And what are we doing with this? We having shooters and peoples are, are, are getting killed at our parks, and we need to do something, just can't sit around and just look at one another, because those are people, a lot of people could have been killed in Legion Field. So as a community here in Newton County, we need to get together and, and, and do what we can, and maybe ask the governor, or ask the lieutenant, or ask whoever we need to ask, and see if we can't put a sign at our parks, no guns allowed, cause I'm telling you, they told them everywhere, fourteen and fifteen-year-old kids told guns. I've never seen it before in my life. That's what we need to be having to debate on, people getting killed, but I'm gonna say this to my colleagues, you can think that it's only in Atlanta, it's about fifteen, five minutes on a good day drive from Atlanta here, they down here too. So if we do something, we might be missing, uh, some of our constituents, being around people who want, want to raise a little bit of hell. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Sorry about the time it gets to me, everybody's ready to go. Um, you know, being a commissioner is a tough job, and I know that, that there's people here that know that, and you've got to balance everything, you've got to balance, you know, tax dollars, parks, safety, fire, we hear you, I just want you to know that we hear every citizen that comes up here, and trying to balance it all is very difficult, cause every district and every constituent has something different that is important to them. They have roads, they have problems with their roads, they have, you know, they want parks, they want, you know, everything that is out there, but there's a balance between high taxes and those services, and that's, as a commissioner, you have to do that. I took a look, I have a good friend that's the chairman of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, their mileage rate is eighteen point six, okay? Eighteen point six, that's a lot. People, we would be lynched if that was the mileage rate tonight that we were raising. So we do have to work with you and find a balance, and find these projects, and get them out there, and get these things done. I asked about the grant, because I have been hearing about this grant, I want to see it, and I'm gonna find you after the meeting, cause I want to get a copy of it, cause if it's there, it's there, I, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to move forward, do something, or be done with that sentence. I get tired of hearing it, I'm one of these people that you can only talk about it two times, and then you gotta do something about it. So that's what has to happen for me, and that's how I am. So if we have it, great, I'll take a look at it after the meeting, but you know, like I said, as far as the Monk family, I want to address that, Ms. Sanders, the Monk family, I'm very good friends with the Monk family, and I have reached out to them, I had direction when I first came on this board in January to reach back out to them, and I have had conversations with them, so that, that hasn't been, that's not dead, there's other things going on, maybe that they're doing that, I don't know, I'm just trying to help the situation, cause like I said, I want to hear it twice, and then I want to do something about it. Get tired of hearing it over and over and over, because it's ridiculous. So you either fix it, or solve the problem, or tell people the truth, just tell them the truth, no, that's the word. So that's how I feel about it, and, um, you know, just want everybody to know out there, we got a lot of county employees out there, fire, everything, we hear you, we're just trying to figure out how to balance it all for you. But thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for all the hard work with this board on the budget, every single person at this table had a hand in that, and along with the department heads. Thank you.
If I could just, um, say something tonight, I don't want to turn the sprinklers on, I don't want that to happen, but, um, our county clerk, who has been with us for three decades, and maybe a little more, has decided that she's going to retire, and, um, she's, she's here tonight, this is her last meeting with us, we want to, probably everybody in the county knows Jackie Smith, you've probably either sent her an email, or you've talked to her, or she's prayed for you, or maybe all three, but she has been a faithful, faithful servant of Newton County, and she truly loves this county and the people in it. So tonight, we just want to thank her, we're so, so blessed by her, so... Well, she did well, I didn't turn the sprinklers on, so we do appreciate and love her.
Okay, before we get everybody's favorite motion, we do need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel matters. executive session to discuss personnel matters. the meeting. And I'll suggest we'll do it in one motion.